I'm ready.
Go.
All right, it's time to call the board of the regular meeting of the council, Tuesday, January twenty-sixth. We do have a forum. My mother, Jamie Koch, from Austin's Episcopal, here to give this speech.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city of McAllister the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice in its heart.
That's probably gonna work a lot better. Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Vote Wright?
Here.
Pritchard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. We're on to Employee of the Month for December twenty-twenty. The Employee of the Month for December twenty-twenty is Stephanie Jacomo. Stephanie has been part of too many special projects and assignments to count. Stephanie excels and puts her heart into every extra project and task. She works to understand other departments and listens for where she can help. On a project, she reads and researches extra frequently on her own time just to learn a new part of the city government. Sorry about the glasses. Stephanie is organized, intelligent, focused, determined, and highly successful in everything she does. She has spent many long hours being part of the emergency management response team responding to COVID- nineteen. By working with the county team, she's able to get that information to our own city management departments and citizens. She has responded to emergency information calls on her days off and evenings, essentially being on call twenty-four-seven. On top of it all, she keeps a calm attitude, stays positive, and focuses on what needs to be done. She is passionate about certain projects like Hunter Park or recycling. At the end of the day, Stephanie has always dedicated the city and making her community a better place. For these reasons, we concur that Stephanie Jacomo has gone above and beyond her duties and is most deserving of this award. And one thing that's not in here that is very important to note is she does the grant writing for the city of McAllister, and so far she's gotten us about two-point-two million dollars in grants. Stephanie, will you come up? I'm not sure how to do it in the times of COVID, so. Can we give you this? James is gonna take a picture.
Thanks, Stephanie.
You've been fascinating.
She's forty-five percent safe. Okay, we're on to. On to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address. Council requests that comments be limited to five minutes. Did not have anybody sign up, but if anybody's here that would like to speak, come forth. Seeing no one, we will move to the consent agenda. The agenda tonight consists of, excuse me, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of the minutes from the January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting of McAllister City Council; B, approval of claims for January sixth through January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one; C, accept and place on file the McAllister Defense Support Association Fourth Quarter Report; D, accept and place on file the Keep McAllister Beautiful Association Second Quarterly Report for Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty. Would anyone like anything removed? I'll take the motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Vote Wright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Vote Wright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are now on to a public hearing. All persons interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business shall have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article Two, Section Two-on-Two-B of the city charter. The hearing tonight is Conduct a Public Hearing on Structures Deemed by City Staff to be Dilapidated by Reason of Deterioration, Age or Obsolescence, Inadequate Provisions of Ventilation, Light, Air, or Sanitation, Neglect, Need of Repair, or Accumulation of Debris Where the Same Constitutes a Danger to the Safety of the Neighborhood, and Consider and Act Upon a Resolution Declaring Certain Structures as Dilapidated and Detrimental to the Health, Safety, or Welfare of the General Public. Take a motion in a second. Open public hearing. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Vote Wright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Vote Wright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to Agenda Item Number One. Conduct a public hearing on structures deemed by city staff to be dilapidated by reason of deterioration, age, or obsolescence, inadequate provision of ventilation, light, air, sanitation, neglect, need of repair, or accumulation of debris where the same constitutes a danger to the safety of the neighborhood, and consider and act upon a resolution declaring certain structures to be dilapidated detrimental to the health, safety, welfare of the general public. Ms. Clifton?
Good evening, council. I just come before you to request the condemnation of the two structures. One is at three-nineteen West Adams, and the other one is eight-twenty-one East Delaware. And we have sent notices, posted notices, and took all the appropriate actions for those notices on both of these structures.
Did you say eight-twenty-one or eight-twenty-three?
I said eight-twenty-one East Delaware.
Okay, I think in here it's eight-twenty-three.
No, eight-twenty-one.
No, I'm sorry. I looked at that wrong. The owner lives at eight-twenty-three. Well, I'm very glad that we got that one on there, because that place is in really bad shape. And there is a young lady with a child who lives next door to it. That house is very close to falling onto her, onto where she lives as well. So, does anyone have any questions or comments? I make a motion that we accept. Second, Councilman Pritchard. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Pritchard?
Yes.
Vote Wright?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Carries. We're on to Agenda Item Number Two. Discussion of Possible Action on Approval of Certain Costs Related to the Fire Department. Funds to be used from the city of McAllister's fire department portion of the county quarter cent excise tax for fire services. Mr. Stasiak?
Mayor, members of the council, during some routine cleaning of our bunker gear, we found out that there was a couple of sets that had deteriorated beyond being able to be repaired. In addition, we're in the process of hiring some new recruits, so we're gonna need a couple pairs of bunker gear for that. So, tonight, we are requesting four sets, the purchase of four sets of bunker gear for the fire department using the quarter cent sales tax for the county fire tax.
Are there any questions or comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Vote Wright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Vote Wright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to Agenda Item Number Three. Consider and act upon funding retroactively for the two percent employer-paid pension to OMRF that was frozen during budget cuts for sixteen pay periods from April twenty-twenty through November twenty-twenty. This is for non-uniformed employees. Mr. Stasiak?
Mayor, members of the council, back in November, the council reinstated the two percent pension plan, employee-paid pension through OMRF for all non-uniformed employees. For the period of April through November, we did not fund that for any of the non-uniformed employees, and we continued to fund all of the union employees. So, tonight, we are asking to go back retroactively for approximately sixteen pay periods and fund that program for all current employees.
So, essentially, we already approved doing that. We just didn't fund it, and now we're just funding it?
No, we reinstated it going forward in November.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this is going back from April to November and funding the program during that period that we did not fund it. Total cost is approximately sixty-three thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Pritchard?
Can we? This was in the previous fiscal year, correct? Or a portion of it?
Correct. Yes, a portion of it was April, May, and June.
So, can we spend the money for that fiscal year?
You can spend it now and fund the program now, and you're making up that ground, but you're not actually spending it in last fiscal year. You're spending it this year, and so you're just paying that gap.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'll take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Vote Wright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Vote Wright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to Agenda Item Number Four. Consider and act upon accepting the bid amount of two-hundred-eighty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety dollars from Sunrise Construction LLC, authorizing the mayor to sign notice of award for Sonja Way Drainage Improvement Projects. Mr. Vaughn, this is the one that we had the last meeting. We moved forward, isn't it?
Yes, it was tabled from last meeting. Bids were received on January fifth for this project. This was a project that was identified in the five-year program of whenever the stormwater program began. We had five plan holders on the project. Four bidders did submit bids, and the low bidder was Sunrise Construction. And we do recommend the award in the amount of two-hundred-eighty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety dollars.
Any questions? Take a motion in a second. Approved. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Vote Wright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Vote Wright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to Agenda Item Number Five. Consider and act upon authorization for the mayor to sign PWSID number OK-102-06-09 consent order, case number two-zero-dash-two-three-five, and grant authorization to pay fine associated with this consent order. Mr. Stasiak?
Mayor, members of the council, we have received a consent order along with a fine from ODEQ for non-compliance of trihalomethanes, TTHMs, I think is what everybody's used to hearing, and halacitic acids, H double-eight-fives. This is, we have been out of compliance for quite some time. Even though we're barely out of compliance, we are out of compliance. We are required by this summer to have a plan in place to remedy this situation. Basically, it boils down to a flushing program that has to be implemented every month. In the past, we have done periodic flushing of our system. This is caused by stagnant water in the system that's not being used. And then when we go ahead and do our testing, we're getting some of that stagnant water. So, with a flushing program and then a testing program, we feel that we'll be able to remedy this situation moving forward. The key to all of this is having a routine and doing it routinely through the city. What's caused us problems in the past is lack of manpower, and we have emergencies that constantly pop up, and we need to take care of those emergencies. And what gets pushed to the backside is the flushing program. So, we're gonna come up with a program of flushing with our utility maintenance and have a backup department in case we do have an emergency. That fine is in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Any questions or comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Vote Wright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Vote Wright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to Agenda Item Number Six. Consider and act upon approval to purchase two new and unused, fully outfitted twenty-twenty-one Dodge Charger police vehicles. Chief Hurd?
Our request is two twenty-twenty-one Dodge Chargers, fully outfitted. These will be outfitted by the same company that done the last six Ford Explorers that we had. It's a real good company. We like the way they do their work. They're reputable, and they have a place. The last one's come from Little Rock, Arkansas. They have a location in Oklahoma City, so they'll be able to do it right there. It'll be a package deal through Bob Howard. They'll take care of it since Dana. Dana will send it back to Bob Howard, and they'll send it to us. It'll be warranted. In the past, we've had to deal with vendors from Tulsa or Oklahoma City. If we have trouble, we're constantly having to take it back. Over the last few years, the vendors have been not, their quality hasn't been what it used to be. Dana's good, so that's why we're requesting to go with them.
We've bought quite a few police cars lately. How close are we getting to where we need to be?
This will get all the old red, white, and blue ones off the street. We still have a couple, probably as a pool car. And we're still, we just hired two new officers. They're gonna start into the academy next week, and we got an opening for one more. But it should get all the, all the daily drivers will be black, say.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Vote Wright. Any discussion? Cor, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Vote Wright?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are actually gonna skip Item Seven, because it's gonna be included in Item Eight. And so, we're on Item Eight, Discussion of Mid-Year Financial Update. Mr. Stasiak?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are actually gonna skip Item Seven, because it's gonna be included in Item Eight. And so, we're on Item Eight, Discussion of Mid-Year Financial Update. Mr. Stasiak? You can do it from here if you want.
No, I'd rather do it back here, if that's okay with you. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Proud to be presenting to you the mid-year budget. One of the things I want to talk about is, you know, I don't think you're gonna see any surprises tonight. We keep you very well informed on a monthly basis. We do budget appropriations, budget amendments on a monthly basis. So, we keep you highly apprised as to the condition of the city and the projects that we're working on. You guys approve all of our projects moving forward. And what I want to do is talk a little bit about where we are currently, what we've done in the past, and kind of what our needs are through June thirtieth of this year. So, first of all, everybody has seen this before. This is our general fund at a glance. And as you can see, our actual beginning fund balance was about eight-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. I think everybody is aware that we keep a million dollars, try to keep a million dollars in this account just for payrolls and payables and those type of things on a monthly basis. We've had a very, very good year. We budgeted very conservatively. Because of that conservative budgeting, our revenues, we are actually over-budget on our revenues about eight percent. And our expenditures are very close to being at the fifty percent level. This is all as of twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty. You can see that our ending fund balance is about one-point-seven million dollars. So, we're gonna be giving you some information on what our recommendations are to spend some of that money at the end of this presentation. This is our MPWA, McAllister Public Works Authority. Thank you. With fifty percent of the year gone, beginning fund balance, seven-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. Our revenues are up, and this is mainly due to our rural water districts. We're about seven-point-seven-seven percent over budget. And our expenditures are down quite a bit, five-and-a-half percent, five-point-seven percent. That's about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, we're quite a bit under on our budgets. Probably got to do with just projects that will be forthcoming. If you look at our ending balance, one-point-eight million dollars. Like I said, we're gonna be talking about some projects moving forward and some equipment needs that we have. This fund also, we try to keep about a million dollars in it at all times. We get a lot of questions from time to time about why do we have twenty-five or thirty million dollars in the bank? And why aren't we putting that to work in our city? Just want to remind everybody that we have dedicated funds, and we have requirements with each one of those dedicated funds. These are a lot of our dedicated funds. Our employer retirement, which is very healthy, at fourteen-point-seven million dollars. Our emergency fund at three-point-eight, almost three-point-nine million dollars. And I wanted to let you know that, if you remember, we did pay back that five-hundred thousand dollars that we borrowed early on during the pandemic, so that fund has been made whole. Our landfill, subtitle D. Keep in mind that we have three-point-three million dollars in this account. Our landfill's at about ninety-five percent capacity. And if we go into closure with that landfill, it's about five to six million dollars to close that landfill. One of the reasons we don't close it, and it's open very, on a very limited basis, is so that we don't have to incur that five or six million dollars when we don't have it today. Our economic development fund, one-point-nine million dollars. One-point-two million dollars of that is grants from OSNPC that can only be used to benefit the base here in McAllister. So, really, in that account, there's about six or seven-hundred thousand dollars. Our stormwater fund, we collect about a million dollars a year. You just approved a two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar project, and we have multiple projects coming your way before the end of the fiscal year. And then you can look at our CIP fund, which is for equipment, our tourism, technology, infrastructure, E-nine-one, and all other funds. We have about, I think it's thirty-seven funds total. The other funds are about one-point-three million, very small amounts. So, when people ask you, why do we have twenty-seven million dollars in the bank? This is the reason why. We have obligations here at the city. Talking then about our dedicated sales tax and our dedicated bond sales tax. I think everybody's aware that we have one percent of our sales tax is dedicated towards old bond payments. We budgeted about three-point-four million dollars, and that was based on a very reduced anticipated revenue. To date, we're at about two, little over two million dollars. If you were to double that for the year, we would be at a little over four million dollars. Our bond payments are almost four-point-six million dollars. So, we're gonna have to subsidize this. If everything happens the way it looks right now, we'll have to subsidize this fund about five-hundred-and-fifty, five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in order to meet our bond obligations. Our sales tax does not cover this. At the bottom, you can see what we've had to send over to subsidize those bonds over the past years. This is our general fund resources. I think everybody's aware that we are, sales tax is our bread and butter. It's interesting that I went back and looked five years ago, and our sales tax, five years ago, was about seven-point-eight million dollars. We are anticipating six-point-seven million dollars, about one-point-one million dollars less than what we had five years ago. That's about a fourteen percent decrease. If you look at our use tax, our use tax five years ago was about six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. We are anticipating use tax at almost two-point-four million dollars this year, or a three-hundred-and-sixty-five percent increase over the last five years. So, what you're seeing here is exactly what we hear in the national economy. People are going to online sales. Our online sales use tax is up three-hundred-and-sixty-five percent. Our sales tax is down fourteen percent. If you look at the two of them combined, from two years, from last year to this year, we're almost exactly where we were last year. Couple of things I want to point out. If you look at revenues from oil and gas leases, about two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars. It's two percent of our income. It wasn't many years ago that our oil and gas leases were giving us about one-point-one million dollars. So, those gas leases are deteriorating and slowly going away. But that's money that we don't have today. Police fines, about six-hundred thousand. You can look at the rest of them. Franchise tax has been pretty consistent over the years, and our court costs are down a little bit because our police fines are down. If you have any questions, please interrupt. I'm not gonna get into great detail here. This is the undedicated two percent. So, out of three, three-point-seven-five percent taxes received, two percent of it is what we actually run the city on. So, when we talk about, you know, sales tax receipts of one-point-one million dollars for the month, we only get to operate on two percent of that. This'll give you a pretty good indication of what's been happening to us this year. As you can see, if you look at, if you look at December and January, we're starting to see it slide. Our monthly receipts are quite a bit lower than the previous year. We are anticipating with the new stimulus money. When we saw that first stimulus money come through the city, our sales tax increased dramatically. That additional six hundred dollars that was just recently distributed, along with the additional unemployment fund, funding for people that are out of work, we are anticipating this jumping a little bit. If they do the fourteen hundred dollars on top of the six hundred, it will jump significantly in the future. What we found out is people went out and actually spent this money. Our use tax, here again, you can look at it. Our use tax is actually under budget for the year. Part of that is due to they have not started constructing the new shopping center. We anticipated that shopping center to be in construction by now. But interesting enough, we started tracking back, because they've been buying things out there, and we really haven't seen it show up in use tax. Well, when we got to digging into it, we found out that a lot of that is coming through on our sales tax. It's not coming through on our use tax. So, we are seeing money to the city based on some of those expenditures that are going on at the shopping center right now. Water sales, water sales have been strong this last year. I think part of it's got to do with, we've been changing out a lot of meters. We've been moving those larger meters and getting them changed, getting them fixed. I think everybody understands that as these meters get older, they slow down. So, we've been focusing on the larger meters. In our water districts, they are up tremendous amounts of money, receipts. Yes, sir.
Are these dollars?
Yes, sir, they are. So, I mean, if you look at December compared to two years ago, about a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars. Last year was ninety-nine thousand dollars. This year, we're at a hundred-and-eighty-two, and that's reflective of that increase that we passed on to the rural water districts. Yeah.
Is that supposed to be a total from the far right corner? It looks like it's not.
Show me which one you're on.
This is, it's the one just before.
Yes, this, are you talking about this down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's through two-four-six, that's seven months' period. Four-point-seven million dollars? Four point seven million dollars.
This one's got two point nine million.
That's use tax.
Right, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yes.
That doesn't look like a total to me of that column.
Yeah, that number shouldn't be there. I apologize for that. Cross that one out. This is our employee headcount. Currently, we have two hundred and eleven budgeted positions here at the city. We currently have a hundred and ninety-six people on the payroll. We are short about fifteen people. Some of the good news is, is in our police department, we had a new officer come on in December and this week we had two new recruits start. So we're getting very close to full employment in our police department. We are currently testing in our fire department for those open positions. So those will be coming forward. And then in community services, public works, public utilities, we are always interviewing and looking for people to fill those positions. Planning is, 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 is at budget. Our nine-one-one, we are short one employee there and administration wise, we're only short one employee. So currently, we're at a hundred and ninety-six employees with two hundred and eleven budgeted. Any questions on employment? That's, we've come a long way. At one point with the furloughs, the layoffs, the unemployed, we were down sixty, I think it was sixty-five employees at one point during the middle of the pandemic. So we've come a long way in, in rebuilding this, the employee levels here at the city. This is some of the projects that we worked on in the last year. Chief Hurd talked about some of the police cars, that, that along with a bunch of, a lot of pickups. We were able to replace a lot of our fleet this last year. Spent six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Our street overlay project, which was extremely successful, overlaid twenty-five blocks here in the city, five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The canal bank at one oh two Sonya Way, this is the new concrete canal behind Sonya Way, in between Sonya Way and Reneger Animal Clinic. That was three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. We did the relocation of the raw water main, oh, out at McAl- Lake McAllister Dam, moved that line, that thirty-inch line underground and got it off the dam. The canal bank at Tenth Street, back behind Belmont Circle, that's a highly visible, well-needed canal prop, project that came through our stormwater system. That lift, with lift station, that's the U P S lift station. And I can tell you that when they got ready to unplug that lift station and plug the new one in, it was just about ready to collapse. So we got there just in the nick of time. Where's Robert? He's gone. Yeah, that was, that was a pretty interesting situation on the lift station. And then we can go down through the list. Machinery, equipment, C D B G, that's our matching sewer programs for sewer line replacements. Sidewalk project on Wade Watts, various stormwater projects, sewer line replacements. The Clearwell, that's the engineering and design. As you're aware, that project is going to start kickoff next week and I'm going to talk about that a little bit later. Concrete street repair, this is our panel replacement program. If you drive out Strong Boulevard, out by Electric, they've been out there for a couple of months, replacing the bad panels out there and they'll be out there probably for two more months, replacing those panels. Sonya Way drainage improvements and Pier Street, the rebuilding of Pier Street. So quite a number of projects that have occurred, about two point nine million dollars worth of projects over the last twelve months. Last thing I want to talk about is future expenditures. We talked earlier about the ending balances of the general fund and the ending balances of the M P W A and that we have some he- hefty balances. We need to fund the furlough days that we did not take. Everybody ended up only taking two furlough days and we had budgeted twelve. So we had to put that, we're going to have to put that money back into the budget to balance the budget, three hundred and seven thousand dollars. The retro contribution, which you guys have, which the council approved earlier tonight for the general fund is thirty-three thousand. We are requesting the funding of the other half of the clothing allowance. And with that, with that funding, we will have reestablished all the benefits that people gave up during the pandemic. So this is pretty exciting. Once the contribution for the pension and, and the clothing is taken care of, then we've made everybody whole here at the city. I'm going to pass on the two street operators for just a second and I'll, I'll come back to that. And then our safety incentive program, which has become very, very popular and very advantageous for the city. You know, I think you guys have all been part of our conversations of what's happened with our workman's comp here at the city and how our safety department and our programs are actually paying off in the form of reduced expenditures that we're having. And we're having a much safer work crew out there and spending a lot less on our workman's comp. So we want to continue that safety program. So about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars in expenditures under the M P W A. Four years ago, council approved us to borrow a million dollars to do the A M I system, which is the automated meter system for the city of McAllister. Now, that million dollars only covered half the city. When we, when, when we spoke to you about that and you approved it, you knew that after five years, we took out a five-year loan, that we wanted to come back and finish the other half of the city and get those automated meters in the ground. What we're requesting tonight is to pay off that last year of the A M I system and then we will be turning around and requesting council to fund another million dollars so that we can go back out and do the other half of the city for the A M Is and get this program completed. The retro contribution for M P W A, the other half of the clothing allowance, of course, the safety incentive, about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Something that's come up under the M P W A that I need to make you aware of is our water plant is forty-two years old. There are components at this water plant that have run for forty-two years. Our, our clarifiers, which are the big concrete containers out there where we put the raw water and we actually get the sediment, the, the made, the big particles of sediment. Well, in the bottom of that, because that thing's about twenty feet deep and it's got to be a hundred feet across, there is a system, a drive system in the bottom of that with a rake and that rake goes very, very slow. It only moves, that rake system on the bottom only moves about five feet a minute, but it's been running for forty-two years. We developed a, a leak, which we thought was in the seals. We authorized the draining of that clarifier and we pulled that drive and that drive is destroyed. There's nothing left of it. The ball bearings are shot, everything's shot in this drive after forty-two years, which you can imagine. In order to replace that drive, we're looking at somewhere between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we're going to have to move forward with that. And the reason we're going to, we have three of these, okay? And if we get in really hot times of the year, that's one-third of our water capacity that we cannot produce. This has got to be fixed and it's got to be fixed right away. We have found these units. They're sitting on the shelves at two different distributors. Like I said, they're between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The significance of this is we just started having problems with the second one. We have got to get this taken care of before we get into the hot weather. So we'll be moving very, very quickly on these drives and bringing that information to you. This is just, just happened recently.
Have we looked into any newer technology? I mean, it all comes up that's forty-two years old. Surely they've got something better by now.
Mayor, I am not an expert in this. I am looking at the experts and, and asking for their assistance and guidance in this. To me, I'm not aware of any new technology. You know, we're, we're talking about installing a system back in a forty-two-year-old system. So the way that this thing sits down inside, I'm sure you would have to rebuild those concrete structures that are out there. So nobody said that there's a better system out there, that there's a better technology. What I'm hearing is based on our structure, this is the way it has to go back. Forty-two years old, I mean.
Oh, yeah, I guess I'm just thinking that there's undoubtedly another way to do it than, than the way they did it forty-two years ago.
I'm sure there is, if you're going to build a new water plant.
Well, but if, you know, if we, we have invested a significant amount of money in the plant.
Oh, absolutely.
And, you know, if we had to spend a little bit more to get a, a better system going forward to buy us more time.
Mayor, I will address this with the engineers and get back to you on this, okay? Because I'm not, I'm not qualified to make that, that call. Under our C I P, if you look at the back of your packet, there's a couple of pictures of our fire trucks. Our fire trucks, gentlemen, are twenty-five years old, all three of them. We are seeing major repair bills coming forth on these, on these trucks. And I'm not talking about five thousand or ten thousand dollars here and there. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars to get these trucks just through all of the safety checks and the safety programs that are required on these fire trucks. It's time to move forward and focus on replacing these fire trucks. That fire truck is five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We need three of them. This is the first step and we anticipate doing this with some cash and also borrowing some money as we move forward on that fire truck. We talked earlier about the two police cars, eighty-three thousand dollars. The grade all and going back to the two street operators. Our grade all, that's one of the first pieces of equipment that was purchased that council authorized when I first got here. That is the backbone of our streets department. That is a giant articulating backhoe is what it is. It is a very versatile piece of equipment. You can drive it forwards, backwards. The, the bucket itself actually rotates three hundred and sixty degrees. You can shape any kind of ditch, any kind of landscape that you need to with that. What I, what I am proposing is that we take that grade all, that's now eleven or twelve years old, put it in our stormwater division. Actually, the, the operators in the grade all will stay with the streets department under the direction of stormwater and they will go and start working on the ditches, all the open ditches that we have here at the city that we don't, that we're not able to do on a day-to-day basis. So that grade all and those two operators in a dump truck would be, that would be their, their primary job on a day-to-day basis. We would take the new grade all and put it in the streets department for their, for their daily use. Finally, we, we have a brush chipper. That is the matching grant for a grant that Stephanie got. And that brush chipper will be out at our landfill and we'll be able to chip all of the limbs and brush that's brought in on a day-to-day basis. So a little over a million dollars. This is our fire truck. It's twenty-five years old, fifty-five thousand miles, sixty-two hundred hours. Doesn't sound like much, but these, these trucks are used and the technology has changed dramatically on them. They are mostly stainless steel. It's one of the reasons that they last so long, but the components, the pumps, the apertures, all of those type of things are just wearing out.
So what's seventy-five thousand covered?
I'm sorry, what?
You got seventy-five thousand by the fire trucks? What's that covered?
No, I've got five, the, the cost of that fire truck is five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
I read that, but in the paper here, it says seventy-five thousand.
Show me which one you got.
I read that the dollar sign, it's a five, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then it, this is the grade all. This is the piece of equipment that's really the backbone of our streets department. This truck can just about do anything. And we have a couple of very, very talented operators. Look at this truck and look at the condition of it and look at the way it's taken care of. This street department has maintained this. They know how important it is for this, for the backbone of the city. This thing has been maintained just unbelievably for the last eleven or twelve years. Still in good shape. And that's my presentation.
Must have been comprehensive. The, which, it's not in the, the original agenda, but I think we got it in addendum. It's the second meeting of the month, so we have to decide, well, decide if we're going to continue the mask mandate. I see no reason why we wouldn't at this point in time. There hasn't been any reduction or anything like that. So unless someone is wanting to take any action on it, we, if we just take no action, it continues on for another month. Okay, so we will now move to new business, any matter not known or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section three one one point nine, title twenty-five. Do we have any new business, Mr. Stasiak?
Yes, sir.
And we are on to your, your report.
Just a couple, I would cover the most of it. We need your budget. Just wanted to let you know that we have held precon- preconstruction meeting on the Clearwell and the contractor will be on site next Monday, February the first. This is a project that we've needed for a long time. This is going to give us a million, an extra million gallons of storage at our water plant for clean water. So excited about that. Kaimeche Drive, we've held the preconstruction meeting on it. It's been completed and that contractor will be on site February the eighth. So you might want to avoid that area in your travel. Use Wade Watts Boulevard, not Kaimeche Drive. We are out for bids. We've discussed this quite often over the last couple of years. We have put out a request for proposals for right-of-way mowing and get our employees off these right-aways. If, as you remember, we mow the right-aways from two seventy out to the Indian Nation Turnpike. We also mow the bypass on both sides and we also mow Business sixty-nine. So we are out trying to get proposals from people that can mow that for us in the future. We're concerned going forward, Mayor, with our ability to maintain our cemeteries, maintain our parks and maintain all the other areas that we maintain with our parks department. As everybody's aware, this last summer, because we were not given any county inmates or any state inmates, we fell behind very, very quickly. And for, in order for us to maintain all these right-aways, parks and cemeteries, we're going to have to have a lot of people or contract some of this work out. So we're looking at that program right now.
So we're looking at that program right now.
Why, why are we mowing the, the turnpike? They're, they have their own authority, they have their own revenue, and I know, I know they bid out other sections of it.
Mayor, we're mowing two seventy to the turnpike.
Okay, I thought you said we were mowing both sides of the turnpike.
No, both sides of the bypass.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood, did you?
No problem. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. We will move to remark, remarks and inquiries by City Council, Smith, Council Boatright, Council Pritchard. We'll go to Mayor's comments. Just a couple of things. Want to thank the employees and tell them that we're, we're very happy that we've been able to restore all of the things that, that we had to cut at the beginning, at the beginning of the pandemic with, because of the unknown future. And we're glad that we got, we've got everybody back home, and that's been a goal from the beginning. So I'm very, I'm very proud that we did that, and I'm very glad we got to do it for you guys. And to go along with that, thank City Manager Stasiak and the Finance Department for the work that they did to get us to the point where we had a very good midyear budget review, where we have some money that we'll be able to spend in the second half of the year to do some other projects that, you know, once again, when creating the budget, no one knew where the world was going, and we've, we've had, we've been very, very successful. We've not only maintained, had we, had we not got the CARES money, we would still be in a, in a reasonably good situation. So it's, it's thanks to you guys and congratulations on that. We had the lead committee today meeting, and we are working on a, a, a job incentive program for when, whenever businesses come and talk, you know, what, what can you do for us? You know, the state has, there's the Quality Jobs Act and a few other things. So we're working on creating something from the city that will dovetail with what they do. Certainly, it's not going to be anywhere near as much. We have a lot less money than the state. But the idea is to come up with a, with an outline plan for the council to approve that plan, as these are incentives that may be available. And then when a business comes, each individual business would be, worked through the plan individually. So it wouldn't be, this is what we got, you get everything. It would be, this is what we have, you know, how, how do we work with you? So that way, when our, when Kirk, our economic development director, is talking to the companies, he, he doesn't have to keep coming back and forth to us to say, can we, you know, are we willing to, you know, run a water line or, you know, something like that? So it'll, it'll be something that'll be coming to the council in the future. It's, it's, it's in the, I'd say it's in the beginning of the, the end of the first step, and, and the second and third steps will be coming up. And then lastly, I want to wish Councilwoman Stevens happy birthday, his, his birthday today. He's not, and that's probably why he's not here. And also, you guys keep James Brown, Councilwoman Brown, in your thoughts and prayers. He is still hospitalized because of COVID, and hopefully, hopefully we will be getting him back soon. With that, we will recess the council meeting. I take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from January twelfth, twenty twenty one. Confirm action taken on City Council Agenda Item B three and to adjourn. Motion, Councilwoman Smith, second Councilwoman Boatright, any discussion? Corriged your color roll, please.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from January twelfth, twenty twenty one. Confirm action taken on City Council Agenda Item B three, four, five, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilwoman Smith, second Councilwoman Pritchard, any discussion? Corriged your color roll, please.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We will, I would now take a motion to convene as McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from the December twenty second, twenty twenty regular meeting of the McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, approval of retirement benefits for the period of January twenty twenty one, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilwoman Smith, second Councilwoman Boatright, any discussion? Corriged your color roll, please.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We will now reconvene as the council. I take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Councilwoman Smith, second Councilwoman Boatright, any discussion? Corriged your color roll, please.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Mayor, they did one thousand twelve vaccinations today, four hundred and fifty one in Pittsburgh County.